All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Could we please have roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Shakur.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gurneo.
Here.
Mayor Miller. Mayor Miller.
Oh, here, sorry.
Thank you.
I was trying to find an agenda. I didn't see one anywhere. Thank you very much. All right, item two, discussion regarding regulations of on the keeping of animals. Hi, Will.
Hello.
How are you, sir?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
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 Alrighty, so Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the Tonicino Valley's Development Services Department. Before I get into this wonderful presentation tonight, I wanted to take a moment and introduce you to our new code enforcement officers with the town here. We have Keith Hurt and Frank Snoney, if you would please stand. They joined us recently. We stole Frank from the parks and we stole Keith from a whole different line of work and I can't thank them enough. They're fantastic employees.
Good. Good. Welcome. Hope you stayed a long time.
That's the plan.
We'll keep these three animals that are on the screen.
Keep them on there?
Yeah, you're done.
I don't think they're on an acre, so it might be.
No, we, sorry. Alrighty, so as requested, staff has prepared a brief PowerPoint regarding the regulations of the keeping of animals here within the town limits specifically regarding livestock. So I know this is a passionate topic, and so just keep in mind that these are just talking points. Nobody's set in stone on any of this, just here to promote dialogue and and staff's opinion what we think can help the community out, but also retain Chino's rural equestrian agricultural community. So, just to start off here, you do have a couple handouts in front of you that outline not only the Chino Valley Town Code, but also requirements of communities within Yavapai County and also comparable communities within the state of Arizona. As most of you might remember, Chino Valley is the only community that does not regulate the capacity of large hoofed animals, livestock, with the exception of swine. So we're the only community that has no regulations on that. So to summarize what we have in our code, instead of you just staring at a whole bunch of words, I put a whole bunch of words on table for you this morning evening. Just to recap and hopefully streamline this. So in that SR 0.16 district, that's that obsolete district, we can't do anymore, but there are still properties that hold this zoning district. There are no allowances for any type of animal other than domestic dog, cat type animals. Within that SF 12, SF 24, that's the half acre, quarter acre properties, we currently do not have any zoned that. But if there ever was, bird, sheep and goat are allowed with a conditional use permit. Swine, cow and horse are not allowed. In the SR districts, one acre and up, as well as AR 4, AR 5, commercial light and commercial heavy, there is that no cap. You can have any, pretty much anything you want, with the exception of that one swine per acre. And then the remaining districts that multifamily, the manufactured home park, industrial, public land and business park, you are not allowed to have any livestock at all. So, next slide is gonna be some proposals that staff threw together with careful consideration based on code cases that we've experienced. More so the challenging code cases that took a little bit for us to get compliance out of because of our lax rules. So, just starting off here, we get a lot of phone calls regarding keeping of all animals, and most of the time it's just the simple answer of we don't regulate, and that's the end of the phone call. We do get quite a few phone calls and counter conversations regarding individuals who own land within the Chino Meadows subdivision or Bright Star or Highlands Ranch. They're the ones that have that SR 0.16 zoning. We get a lot of calls for people wanting hens. They want to be able to have birds that lay eggs. So, staff put on here that within those districts, that half acre and under lot sizes, you can have up to four hens. Just a starting point, if that's something that council wants to have. I don't know if that works for you, if that works for them, but just to at least start the conversation. We transition into the SR districts, and so this is where we get the passionate discussions on how many cows and how many horses per acre. So we currently allow unlimited. Staff would suggest the starting dialogue with one cow per acre with a minimum requirement of one acre of land for that zoning district or respective SR zoning districts.
I'm sorry, Will, but I'm lost.
Sure.
Um, you're saying on the SR 0.16, that's that top line?
Correct, yes, sir.
What is this thing down at the end that's got the box over the top of it?
I can probably help with that. That's actually the video that the outside is seeing, and I can't get it to move.
You cannot?
I cannot.
Can you go down or something? Or is that saying a horse?
Maybe I can just hide it for...
So, hey, okay. Okay, so we're just on SR 0.16 right now.
I had moved on, but I can, we can go back.
No, 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 I got lost.
Okay, so we'll recap. So SR 0.16, with what we currently have in code, nothing's allowed. What staff is proposing, just for a talking point, is based on dialogue we hear from citizens, four birds, laying hens, no roosters, no anything like that on smaller lots.
Okay.
That extends over to that quarter acre, half acre lots?
And that's the 1,224?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, ready to go to?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I just got lost.
It's all good. Thank you, and I'm glad we didn't go too much farther. So within the SR 1, SR 1.6, SR 2 and SR 2.5, talking points for this evening would be one cow per acre with a minimum of one acre required. So that's those SR 1s that, you know, maybe you have a half acre in SR 1, you wouldn't be able to fit that requirement.
Gotcha.
However, we would still make sure to include that right away dedication to make sure you do have that whole acre like we do on everything else. As far as horses go, talking point would be one horse per every half acre, minimum of one acre required, so two horses per acre, an increase at a fraction of an acre thereafter. Within the AR 4 and AR 5 districts, same provision for the cattle, but the suggestion would be on horses, no limit, but you have to have at least four acres. So that's similarly in line to what our code currently says.
And the faded things are existing that you're not changing?
Yes, sir. No change there.
So if I have one acre, I could have 3,000 chickens on it?
Under current code, yes, you can.
That's nice. Okay.
That's a lot of eggs.
That is a lot of eggs. If we move down to commercial light, commercial heavy, you do have allowances, similar allowances to that of the SR 1 through 2.5 districts, that one cow per acre. So we're just gonna carry that forward, one cow per acre, minimum of one acre required, and then one horse per every half acre, minimum of one acre required. And then we get to these additional requirements here. So that first one is that capacity can be increased through a conditional use permit or even an administrative permit. So, we obviously, and I'm sure you are aware of two of properties that have, you know, two acres, but they can support six, seven, eight, 10 horses on there, and you would never know because of how well they maintain their property. We want to make sure that those guys would still be able to conduct the activities as such, but, you know, if they were ever to change hands and the property starts falling down, we have the ability to revert that permit or expire it to where then they have to play by the same rules that are on the book for everybody else. So we want to make sure that those options are available. The second one is within all zoning districts, if you have a 40 acre parcel of grazing land, you're exempt from the above. An example of this is the 180 acres that is directly to the east of the middle school and elementary school on West 2 North. That's 180 acres of SR 0.16. Under current code, you technically can't have any cattle grazing there. So we want to make sure that that provision does not stay, and they're allowed to graze on those empty lands until development occurs. And then finally, and one of the most important pieces from staff's perspective, is the setbacks for animals, which we currently do not have. And so staff would say 50 feet from all property lines and 100 feet to neighboring residences. We feel that this would help mitigate a lot of the nuisances, but again, this is just a starting point. Communities do lower, communities do higher, so. That is all I have to say, present to you this evening. I am happy to take questions, hash it out.
Are you going or go ahead?
Go ahead.
No, you go.
No, you're.
Flip a coin.
How, so what about cats and dogs? We're not talking about those this evening. Nothing? Can I have 100 cats, 100 dogs? I, there are communities that regulate them. I think Prescott allows up to four cats and dogs per property, whether they enforce that or not, it's on the books. I would suggest we don't go down that route tonight.
Okay, we won't go down. And you're okay with up to two and a half acres having unlimited fowls, sheeps and goats and swine? Oh, no, swine, they're limited.
Still one per acre on that.
Cause I'm not.
Then you're not? Let's talk about it. What, what, what would you?
I have no idea.
Would you like staff to research the matter further on that?
Sure. She's got something to say.
So we, yeah, we were focused on livestock, count horses specifically. We didn't really get into the fowl, but if you would like us to, we absolutely can.
Well, I think it's just leaving the door open for an issue. And the same with the, even the four and the five acres, you know, you could bring in a million chicks and, or turkeys or whatever. Cause I've seen it happen.
And it's, it's not fun.
And then, the one where you said the 50 foot setbacks, like I'll use my property, for example. I have eight and a half acres, but my cows graze up to the fence line.
Right.
So I have to put in a new fence back 50 feet from the property line?
Or we can do just where they, if they're not grazing and you're pinning them up, the pin has to be out 50 feet from the property line, or where you're dropping the hay has to be 50 out from the property line.
Just their main.
However you guys want to shape it. So this is purely up to you.
Well, I just think for people that have, you know, pasturing animals, that's, that's gonna, you're losing a lot of property 50 foot all the way around.
Usually it's, the issue doesn't come from the grazing animals itself, it's from whenever they're pinned up and they're concentrated. That's where you get the urine, the manure, that's where the issue comes from.
And I agree with that. I can go with that. Okay, I'm done. Who wants to go next? Bob?
Didn't you also say that anybody that has properties like that now is not affected until they change owners or there's complaints?
So that's where it gets a little finicky, because we gotta start somewhere, because right now it's, it's open. And once we enact those rules based on zoning, you essentially get grandfathered in. So we all know animals don't live forever, so it would really be a challenge on that end, but this could be a stepping place in the right direction to start helping some of these people who have the issues and then also getting some of these properties in compliance.
I got a question. Okay, so you're, what you're saying is, for instance, my neighbor has a pin and has two to three horses in it, you know, all the time.
Sure.
So, they're gonna be grandfathered in to keep that pin right by the fence line?
I, technically, that's how zoning works, and since we're talking zoning regulations, yes, but we can have some dialogue with Andrew.
Cause I think that will have a problem because there's already problems like this going on right now that should be fixed, and if you grandfather them in, then they won't have to fix it.
Right.
So I'm hoping that that's not the case because these guys are gonna be busy.
We got a great team.
Yeah, so, cause yeah, it is a problem. When they put their pin right up against the property line where we have a fence that the flies in the summer, the urine smell is horrible, and they have an acre. They have a whole half of their acre they're not using.
Absolutely.
And they put it right up by the fence line.
Recently dealing with a situation with cattle.
Okay.
He's got 32 acres and he put a pin, not exactly how sure, but it's right on his fence line, about 75 feet from his neighbor's house, but it's over 400 feet from his house.
Yes.
So.
I know how they feel, so I'm hoping that that's not the case. You're not gonna grandfather them in when they need to be fixed.
We'll have to convert, or consult with Andrew on how, how we would go about that, just because my experience with zoning is that it gets grandfathered, but happy to explore that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Either one of you?
Go ahead, John.
If we were to adopt the standard for cows and horses, and I'm looking on this and I just, I haven't seen it yet, I haven't looked at it at all. How does that, how is that consistent or is it not consistent with other cities and our municipalities in our county?
So.
I'm still looking for them. I see, oh, hoofed animals, there we go.
Yeah. So it's pretty middle of the road. We still, within that AR district, the AR districts, we do have a lot more leniency than any other jurisdictions still. With, with the proposed potential amendments. Yavapai County runs on a point system, so they have, they assign points specific to different animal types, and you tally up your score based on acreage. So there's so many different ways to cut this up, but as far as how we compare, Coconino County is one acre for horses, or one horse, one, and then one cow. So they allow two per acre, two hoofed animals. As far as, Clarkdale's the same way, one acre, two hoofed animals per acre. Cottonwood, you need, per horse, per cattle, you need one. So for one of those, you need 20,000 square feet of land, so pretty much half an acre. Sedona, one acre, you can have up to three animals, increments increased by half acres. Prescott, they need a very similar half acre minimum, but they require two head, you need at least a minimum in order to get one acre for two head of animals, or horse or cow. Prescott Valley, two animals per acre. Wickenburg. Wickenburg is the only one that has a similar unrestricted, but they're with no capacities, but they're really heavy on setbacks, and they're very heavy on placement within there. It can't be within certain, like sightlines even.
So under your proposal, you're familiar with my property, right?
Yes, sir.
And my barn sits, I think the setback was a required 20, so we put it 24 feet.
Okay.
So at night, the horses are in the barn and in the little paddocks, which isn't, I don't believe, 50 feet away from my northern boundary.
True, okay.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? So if we adopted this and I sold the house, that would require the new owners to have to move the barn another 25 feet. Is that what we're saying?
I, I, on what's proposed.
But I have a double fence also between me and the neighbor, just so the horses can't get up to their.
It's still, you're in that, that CUP realm is kind of where that would go, is that you, so you're already doing this, you're keeping your property clean, you're not getting complaints.
Right.
I'd say you're candidate for that CUP or that administrative permit.
All right, and then would you create some type of a, let's just say we adopted everything the way it sits.
Okay.
So there's gonna be a lot of potential properties, myself included. Would we create some type of registry so that if somebody got complained about, a complaint lodged against them that falls outside these guidelines, you'd be able to rapidly look and say, no, they're grandfathered in?
We could.
And, you know, take like a year, give, give the population a year to get registered, say, this is my address, this is who the owner is, it's not transferable between owners, unless it's in the same family, obviously, or something. And this, this is what they were living with prior to this rule coming into effect, so they shouldn't, nothing should go retroactively against them.
I'd say anything's on the table. If that's something that council would like staff to implement, absolutely.
I just don't want to see anything that we do impact, have an adverse impact on existing residents who have been going through their lives with no issues. At the same time, what would be the provision for a new rescue that does have, like, I don't see anything about manure mitigation. I think that's the key to most of our complaints is manure mitigation.
Absolutely.
You know, that's where I'm thinking, you could have a lot of horses if you, you make, you taking care of your manure good.
Right.
It's when it piles up and we get the sheep close and it ends up in everybody else's yard.
Right.
You know, they don't care for it. So I'm wondering if we should talk about that.
Sure. I, as far as current code with manure mitigation, a lot of it has to do with good husbandry practices. We really extend those to the AR properties, those SR 1, SR 2. You can't drag your manure, it doesn't, isn't effective on those smaller lots for the sake of conversation. You really need to be picking it up, removing it from property for it to be effective.
I do have a question on that, too. Is there gonna be a code enforced about that for anything on an acre or less, or two acres or less on cleaning up the manure? Cause that's the main complaint I have. I usually, I don't care how many animals you have, just clean up after them.
Just clean up after them.
And these guys do not.
Sure.
You know, they think that the, the horses are in these pins, whether it rains or snows or it's dry, they're in it. And it's horrible, so that's another thing. I didn't know if you guys were gonna do some kind of code enforcement for the manure.
Absolutely. We absolutely can, yeah.
I'll need that in writing so I can hand it to my neighbor.
I'll give it to you.
I am not concerned with numbers. I'm concerned about the care of the animals and the upkeep of the property. I've seen places with one horse and you want it condemned, and I've seen places with 15 horses and you could eat off the ground.
Absolutely.
I, I don't care about the numbers, whatever the council decides on numbers, but numbers are numbers, and I'm, I would vote against them at this point and leave it up to the code enforcement guys about the complaints they give, about the care and cleanliness, all the way around.
Understood.
Anything else, Bob?
I just have an issue with the 50 foot line and the 100 line. John said he's gonna have to move his barn. It wouldn't be grandfathered in.
Sure, I, we can, however, council would like to write that, if 50 is too much from property line, if we're worried about structures. We can, places have it down to 20 for structures, and then a certain amount of distance from neighbors, their homes. That, that's one of our biggest things. If, I'm sure you remember the Fire Sky equine rescue that we had. That was a long and challenging case because we did not have standards for that. Their, their ultimate solution was removing the cattle from the site and just sticking with, with horses, and right now, we have, they're great. So i- it's really how you want to approach it. If setbacks are the biggest concern, you know, we can lessen them, we can not have them. We can talk numbers or not numbers. It's really just the flavor of how council wants to challenge it, or if not.
Will?
Yes.
What about looking at restricting penning animals and current setbacks? Cause.
Sure.
You know, rather than making them different, cause wouldn't that solve his problem with his barn?
It absolutely could.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, treat it as, as current setbacks. We do have some pretty minor setbacks in the AR districts of 10 feet from property line. So, that, that can get a challenge, but it could absolutely satisfy people in a similar situation of Councilmember McCafferty.
Because Tom, I agree with you. There's, I know of a house that has four horses, and they come right up against the fence, and they, it's perfectly clean.
Yeah, I run my dogs on sheep, and those sheep are pinned right, actually up to my neighbor's fence. The only complaint they have is they don't get to come and watch all the time, cause they don't know when I'm gonna do it. I mean, I, I don't like numbers for, just for the space of numbers.
I, I'm, I share a lot of what Tom's saying's view on that, because some people, I have neighbors that have a lot of horses, and that would be an outlier to this. But you don't know that, like you said earlier in your presentation, they do a good job in where they're located, it doesn't present a problem. But then I've driven around and I've seen five, six horses in a little pen smaller than this area right here. And it's disgusting and it's bad, but I think it's more about the mitigating of the manure and the upkeep of the land than it is the physical number of horses they have.
You're gonna be able to buy manure spreaders on Craigslist for long if you do this.
Anything else, Greg?
No, I'm good.
Okay, you got enough direction?
I think so, just to recap, so pretty much not looking at capacity, looking at more of manure property standards and then potential setbacks?
I think, I think, my opinion, and, and not to argue with Tom, but some things I think need to have a limit, like fowl.
Okay.
And my opinion, of course, I'm speaking for myself. Sheeps and goats, again, it depends if they are clean, why couldn't they come over and get a CUP to get more animal?
I, I think.
I agree with that.
Staff's idea would be.
Have the standard where you want it.
Right.
And if, if they come in and prove they're clean and they're, then yeah, give them permission to go with six or eight or whatever they want.
Absolutely. I, I think staff's.
These two guys are gonna do all these inspections. Well, you gonna run them into the ground in a hurry?
Ah, they're eager. They're eager.
Yeah, I concur with, I, I like that logic.
I don't mind a CUP if we look at the property and say, okay, you know.
So.
Yeah, they can.
It always comes down to the owners. It really does. It comes down to the owners and their ability, their willingness to keep up, be good stewards of the neighbors.
Council prefer a CUP to where that would essentially come to council for approval, or would you rather see more of an administrative approval to where it just ends with staff?
I don't have problem administrative.
Administrative, I don't want them all coming in here.
Any problem administrative?
That's a staff problem, let them deal with it.
But what's the amount?
The complaints come, they're gonna come to you, and then we're gonna come.
I think, I think.
What's the amount on the fowl?
I think they need to research it and come back with this.
Can do.
We, we, we need to put a number on that.
Absolutely. Do we want to look, so staff can come back at a, at a later study date and come in with, with fowl numbers, sheep and goat as well? Just see everything what's across the board standard, and then?
The only thing I think, in my opinion again, that could go with no limit might be CL and CH, because of the fact that it might be a business.
Fair point.
Does that, does that fall into a different category if they're selling cattle?
Within, within the CL and CH, that would be permissible, and, and also within the AR districts, they allow for commercial agricultural farming activities. The only one that it doesn't is within the single family residential.
Okay, well.
Oh, I didn't know she was here. Annie, you got anything to say?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all. My only question for, I agree with what everyone said, I'm just a little confused, and I'm gonna give my property as an example. So I have three neighbors, and all three share fence lines. Are, would all four of us be required to move setbacks? We don't have pens, but it is grazing property for all four of us.
Great question. No, Ms. Perkins, it would not be, you would not be required to move that. The, the dialogue was that grazing would be exempt from the setback, it would be where you were pinning the animals.
Or feeding.
Or feeding, yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, you're good?
Real quick, it says a setback for animals, 100 feet to any neighboring residence, animals, fowl is an animal under this?
Yes, sir.
Well, if it's SR 16, it would meet the requirements.
You're absolutely correct. So that's something to look at, absolutely.
0.16 is not gonna get 100 feet from anybody.
Nope, so I have issues there.
Yeah.
Are we taking input from the audience, cause they're wanting to say something? It doesn't matter who it is.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm fine.
You don't need any input?
Well, if, if there's anybody in the audience, I can't, I can't see behind.
Thank you. Come on, you have to come up to the mic.
Four chickens unless one of them is designated as dinner.
Tina Matters. The SR 16 and SF 1200, most of those are only 55 or 75 foot wide properties. So that's an impossible to do a 50 foot setback.
Yeah, that's what he just said. Yeah, that didn't have to be addressed.
Okay.
State your name, ma'am.
Donna Armstrong.
Thank you. Stand up, please.
Jack, you're gonna get Tom in trouble.
I understand about numbers. I know what he's talking about. Two things, fowl, chicken, turkey, peacock. You're gonna kind of take that into consideration. The other thing is that people move here because it's rural, they want their kids active. Having a half acre, I could have a sheep or a goat for 4H or FFA. And I think we need to have some kind of loophole for the kids, if they're competing, that kind of thing.
And I agree, and that's something they could do with their administrative.
Yeah, definitely.
If you want to address that, Will, come on.
So in reference to the 4H future farmers, we already have provision in code to allow for that. We can bolster it a little bit more to allow for maybe the smaller hoofed animals, but right now we do have a 4H permit.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Thank you. Anything else on this matter? All right, moving on, item three, I think, hang on. There it is. Discussion regarding Old Home Manor and the potential RV park. Hello.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. So, it's a small, just quick update on the RV park out of Old Home Manor. So a little back history, just to refresh your, your memories. Terry, will you help me with the poker? Cause I don't think the. Thank you. Thank you, Anna. So initially, this is what we were looking at for the, the plan at Old Home Manor was the blues and the business park area. And the red, uh, RV park. And then you have some parks and recs and you know, of course, everything else that's already out there. Um, the original forty acres that went out to bid is what Terry is pointing at right now. And unfortunately, it could not pencil. There was no way to make it financially work. The utilities are way down a little bit further up rodeo, so they.
Maggie, just remember that, that they can't see what you're pointing out. I have a quicker appear if you'd like this.
So this was the original parcel that went out to bin. Um, and then upon findings, it would, it was not going to pencil for either the developer or for the town. Because utilities are down here, we would have to bring them all the way up here. Um, so staff got together and determined, thank you, well, was in Lori, a big part of helping with this.
Maggie, can we just point out that north is to the right on this map, right?
No, this, so this is east, north is up, so it's, it's correct.
Oh, yeah, it is. Sorry, excuse me. Thank you.
You're fine. No apologies.
I see it now. I had too many chickens in my way.
There's a lot of chickens on forty acres here. Um. So staff got together, identified, uh, this parcel here. Which is three zero six zero two zero zero one L. Um, because utilities are right here and what it would do would be allowed. Um, allow for, to pencil, allow for the town to make more money off the sale and allow for the developer to be able to go in. Um, upon more findings, uh, there's a water, there is a, it's like a flood plain right here. So they are now, uh, looking at twenty-seven acres, about a hundred and sixty-four spots and we are moving forward on it. Um, and we're just, I, I guess that's really it. We were directed by council and we're moving forward and, um, we're in the next steps process right now. And we'll have another update in the next couple of months.
All right.
Any questions?
I'm sure. Annie, you got something on this, don't you?
Sure do. Good evening.
Hi, Camp Thomas Brand.
Where's the parcel that they're looking at buying now? If that's not gonna, if the flood plain area is not gonna work out?
So it's this one right here on the corner of Jerome Junction and Rodeo. So it's to the south, the parcel. Can you see the cursor, Councilmember Perkins?
Yeah, okay, so it's the same parcel.
Yes, it's the same parcel. They just had to kind of, um, redesign what their initial plan was going to be because of the flood plain.
So it's the very first parcel as you enter Old Home Manor?
Yes, correct.
Would be an RV park to the south.
Yes, correct, correct.
My concern is once it becomes an RV park, it will never be anything else. And it's not our problem if the developer can't pencil it out. That we are asking home developers to do the infrastructure and I don't see why we're not asking this developer to run the infrastructure also. With that being said, we have spent seven million dollars on design to date everything for the business park. And if an RV park were to go in right there, it will never, ever, ever be anything more, in my opinion, than an RV park.
Okay, may I address that? So it's not that we, uh, we're not asking them to help participate in the infrastructure cost. That was also the town side of it, cause even split, it was not something that we could manage to budget. So it just was not penciling on either side of the deal. And for them to get a return on their investment, they couldn't put forth that many millions of dollars because they wouldn't be able to make a pencil for themselves. So that's kind of why we had to switch, uh, locations. And I'm gonna let Will actually kind of address this because it is actually a permitted use within the business park. Will?
I understand.
Conditioning us.
But is it a wise use is the question? Is it a wise use to sell the very first parcel with all the infrastructure already there? Is that in the town's best interest?
I think that that is for council to discuss, um, because I can't really give you an answer for that because my, my opinion is just my opinion. Um, I, I do know there's something out there right now and that we are really looking, um, to get some recreation to the area, especially with the state park going in up north. And it would be nice to have an RV park and if it's not gonna work anywhere else, um, that would be my opinion, but that's council discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. What is the purchase price that we have agreed upon?
That has yet to be determined. They have, um, won the IFB, so the bid, but we have not got what's called a PSA, which is a purchase sale agreement or into the development plan yet. Only because right now we're doing some due diligence, um, the town's on the survey side of it and they're doing some engineering work.
Okay, so what bid won? What was the amount of the bid that won?
I don't have. So for the full forty acres, when it were not to bid was one point. Oh, I gotta do the math in my head. It was one point one five million, I recall, but don't count me on that. And then now that they're only at twenty-seven acres, that's gonna be twenty-seven acres at, they determined, um. It has to go back for another appraisal, but before it was about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand an acre.
With utilities to the property line?
Yes, so utilities, here, let me get my cursor again, go right about here and then you also have a driveway. So that, a lot of that work is done, which was another reason why it was such a, a, a nice parcel to have.
I agree. It's absolutely a beautiful parcel to have. I, just for council's hearing, I do not believe it is the best parcel to put an RV park.
At twenty-five thousand, that comes out to be six, six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little more than that, but I just don't have the paperwork in front of me because it was supposed to be just a brief update and then keep for later discussion for you guys.
Maggie, out of the forty acres, twenty-seven is usable.
Correct.
Can you kind of point where the flood was at? Was it to the southwest?
So, so right about here and then down is where they're cutting out. This is not usable. So they're gonna be looking at all of this over here. Can you see that okay?
Yep.
None of that thirteen is, is usable at all for anybody?
Come again, I didn't understand that.
No, it's a drainage, right?
They're gonna use twenty-seven, the other thirteen and that forty is not usable by anybody.
It's not usable. It's in a hundred-year flood plain.
They won't be able to use it for storage or anything like that?
No.
Okay, just, they'll just decorate it probably.
And their, their plans, which we don't have all in front of us just yet, but if it's similar to what it was before, it's a very nice RV park. I don't wanna say luxury, but it's nice.
How long are people gonna be staying at the RV park? Is there a time limit, thirty days, or is it gonna be one of these where they're there for years?
Uh, that's a great question. And so when we were first looking at this, I looked at every RV park across Yavapai County and I met with RV park owners. Um, and it's sort of market driven. So you're gonna have times of the year where, you know, you're gonna have a lot of transient back and forth, you know, your people coming through during the summer off the forty. Going to Grand Canyon, might just be a couple nights. You might have someone during the winter that wants to come for thirty or sixty days. That's gonna be market driven and not something really that we have total control over, but we can address in the development agreement when that comes forward here in the next few weeks to a month or so.
We're gonna have to have a cutoff.
Yeah. So they will, it will not be a long-term stay. So have you ever seen the RV park over in Camp Verde, the newer one right off the freeway, the two sixty there? I would use that as an example, if you wanna do some research. Um, there's not gonna be skirting. I, I don't know all the development agreement stuff yet, but as far as I know, it's not, it, I know it's not long-term stay. That's not gonna be the situation. But it, the RV parks are market driven because when it gets really slow during a certain time, they might have somebody that comes in and maybe stays longer than the thirty day. But we'll present that to you and that'll be, you know, discussed later in the development agreement. We just don't have the details from the developer yet.
Cause I've seen some where they're long stay. And if we're gonna have that, we're not gonna have anybody from putting a business in there. When they drive right up that road, cause that's gonna be the entrance to, uh, Old Home Manor. And if they see unkept property, they're not gonna want them to put their business there.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, this developer is out of Phoenix. They're a big time developer, all West Van Buren, the whole downtown revitalization, that, that was him. So he is a sophisticated developer. So I wouldn't think that he would go into a small rural community and do something that that was not nice. But again, once we get that development agreement, we get those talks going on, you will definitely be able to have that input. And they will be able to answer those questions directly for you. So they, and they always are asking, what does the town want? So I'd be surprised if they weren't very, um, amicable to, you know, listening to timeframes.
We would have to have a restriction. In how many spaces?
Uh, it's about one hundred and sixty-four right now.
There's a lot of guaranteed money in snowbirds though.
Yeah.
Eric, you say? That's gonna come back to us at a, that council meeting. We're making all those decisions. That, that's nothing to talk about right now.
Yeah, that'll be at a later date. We just, we don't have the development agreement yet. That's correct.
It's a great revenue source for tax, RV parks, so.
You got anything else?
I don't.
I have one more question. Maggie, is this the parcel that council voted on to sell?
So. Let me get to my timeline here. I've got my little cheat sheet. So back in June of twenty-one, um, council approved the sale of land at Old Home Manor. And that was blanket. That was sell it. And then after that, uh, in August of twenty-two, um, they, it was pushed that we would sell, like really try to canvas for an RV park. So it wasn't a specific parcel. It was Old Home Manor blanket statement, sell the land, Maggie. If that helps.
Has this person indicated that I used to go there or I don't go at all?
They have not. They have been very amenable to different spots. They do like working with municipalities. They like contributing to communities. They've been a couple of different places across the state and I think that they also, um, are looking to invest in the community. But as far as, you mean outside the business park or outside of Old Home Manor?
No, I'm saying somewhere else in Old Home Manor. If, you know, if he wants to move down by the Equestrian Park because he can handle more of his business there or something, I certainly don't wanna stop him. But for him to put in there and then I got thirteen acres right in front of him that nobody can use for anything, just doesn't click. Make it a bird farm. That's where those extra chickens can go.
I, okay, so this, but that, that, it doesn't mean that acre is just not usable because you can do waterways, you can do parks.
Okay.
You can do agreement with the RV park developer and the town to do something really cool. Um, whatever future develops, development goes out there. It can. So when it rains really hard, they're playing in the, in the lake of pickleball. Um, so it's not that it's not usable, Councilmember Armstrong.
Okay.
It's just not usable to put something that's affixed to the ground or.
Long as he's amenable to still talking to us, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, they've been.
Hi Maggie, um, can you point again on your cursor approximately where the utilities? And when we say utilities, are we talking, uh, water, sewer and electric?
Correct.
Okay, so how, what's the distance from where that is to the corner of that red?
Approximately eight hundred and thirty feet.
Eight hundred and thirty feet. All right. And has, what's the ballpark cost to extend that if we were to go into some type of development agreement?
I don't have an answer for you on that. That'd be a frank question. I don't know if he's.
He's gonna say it depends.
He's gonna say it depends because things are very different right now.
I mean, I'm just wondering, because I, I think there's some merit to what, uh, Ms. Perkins says because that is gonna be the very first thing. And I'm, I don't dispute that they're gonna, it's not gonna be this big eyesore, but it does seem like an, I, I wasn't envisioning that's where it was. I thought it was gonna go further north. I don't know why I thought that. I just did. So I'm wondering, how would it bankrupt us to try to extend those services? Is it really?
I, I don't think bankrupt is probably the right word, but it's nothing, we don't have anything like that in the budget in the next five years. We, the only time we had money to extend the water and sewer at Old Home Manor was this, if we sold land, then we could keep moving that. Move those utilities, cause right now our funding is focused on putting water and sewer out to extend it, you know, in our roadways.
Right, but on this project, for example, we make the sale of the red, the land that's in the red. Reprogram the, the proceeds from that to extend that, wouldn't it be kind of a win-win? We would be extending it. They'd be putting it in a better location. And I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know if that's logically the right way to go, but it seems.
That's what we tried to do. It still would not pencil.
Oh.
No, even with the sale, yeah, we, the staff addressed that and it still was, it was way far off by a few million.
Oh, it's that bad, huh? Eight hundred feet?
No, eight, well, Frank, so the eight hundred feet from rodeo and Old Home Manor that went up right here, if you look at my cursor. That's already been paid for, but to go from here, all the way up here was a, it's a lot going on there, but I'll let Frank address that for you.
Yeah, let me kind of explain why it starts getting really expensive. As we extended the utilities about eight hundred and thirty feet or so, but it's still another, these squares are about twelve hundred and fifty feet. By twelve fifty is a forty acres. So you're looking at about sixteen hundred feet to get to the red.
Okay.
Um, and then if our code is followed, they have to not only go that sixteen hundred feet at about, with water, sewer and streets, that's about a million and a half or so. And if they have forty acres, then they're also extending twelve fifty all the way around the property to get to the farthest end of the property. So suddenly you're about five million or so. Not to mention what it costs them internally, but I know that's up their expense for internal. So, but that's, that's one of the conundrums we were looking at is that you have to extend the water, sewer and street network. And you could, as council, you could waive some of those requirements to extend to the farthest end of the property or not, so. But you're looking at a million and a half minimum just to get to the very corner of that property.
Which would be almost about the cost of the land, right?
Yeah.
So we could just give them the land and run sewer out there for their money. I got a question, Frank, while you're there. What, what year did we, uh, take bu- purchase Old Home Manor?
Ninety-eight, was it?
It started in the nineties.
Right.
Different parcels at a time.
So since ninety-eight, which is twenty-four years, we've been sitting here trying to figure to get something to happen at Old Home Manor. For twenty-four years, we've put all kinds of monies into different designs and now we have somebody that wants to come. What's this holding up? It's not like there's fifteen factories waiting to go in out there and why would a factory care if an RV park's next door?
Oh, I don't know, but I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate and just trying to.
I understand, but I'm just saying, we got somebody that wants to do something. Nobody else wants it. In my opinion, let it happen.
I agree.
I'm done.
I agree. Maggie, if you look at the two sixty RV park at, does, are the two sixty in Calverdy?
It is, correct.
Looks great. Looks good looking RV park.
Yeah, it's not a eyesore. It looks wonderful and it gets a lot of traffic going through there and we're, we are looked a lot. Yeah.
I'm gonna ask this again. Is this the lot, is this the parcel that council voted on to sell for the RV park?
Okay, I hope I can, help you understand this better now. There was no parcel, individual parcel that was voted on to sell. It was a blanket statement, sell the land at Old Home Manor.
Do you have your timeline with you, specifically the last ten years? Jack, I understand where you're coming from with the twenty-eight years, but we've really only been working on this for the past ten. And have invested seven million into it so far and change. Which is where I have a problem with it being the very first entrance.
Annie, not if you go back to the Pupo area when, era when they had all their designs going and stuff. They spent millions on it back then too.
Maggie, do you have the same timeline, um, that you sent me?
Yes, and that only goes back to six fifteen twenty-one, Councilmember Perkins.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one?
Uh, June fifteenth twenty-one, when I was given the approval, well, staff, but directed at me to sell the land at Old Home Manor. And it wasn't a particular parcel. It's okay. Thank you.
Um, no, um, not that, forgive me, I am sick and my head is pounding. Um, that particular parcel that they were originally looking at, we voted on. So if we voted on that parcel, why did we have to vote on that parcel if it was a blanket statement for all of Old Home Manor?
I don't. I'm gonna have to look into that for you, um, because I don't recall, I recall going out to an invitation for bid, but not on a particular parcel. We got to the point where we were almost in a development agreement stage when we realized it's just not going to work there.
You know, maybe we should research that so we have more information. And then we can go from there. Agreement? Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with Annie, but I'm not opposed to this. I'm not opposed to this project at all. I'm just asking the questions.
I'm just saying, if, if we have to re-vote on a different piece of parcel and whatever, let's do what we gotta do, but let's find out what's going on for sure.
So for further direction, you guys want to know what, if there was a vote on the last parcel to sell? Am I correct, Councilmember Perkins?
I know there was a vote on the last parcel to sell, so my question is, why did we vote on that one if we didn't have to, if it was a blanket statement? If we didn't have to, if it was a blanket statement, so that now this parcel is in the works, they won the bid. Um, and they're doing their engineering to put the RV park at the very first entrance of Old Home Manor. And I just wanna also bring back to remembrance, all about sprouts that wanted to move to Old Home Manor. But we didn't have the infrastructure there, and they had to renew their lease, and now we do have the infrastructure there. And we're putting, we're considering putting an RV park in there. So, I'm happy, I love an RV park, I want an RV park. I do not agree that that location is best for the business park at all whatsoever. It should be further down by recreation where it was originally designated. I yield.
Anything else?
Anything else?
No, sir.
Anything else, guys? Okay, thank you, Maggie.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, we're gonna be adjourned until six o'clock.
Which is nice.